He was never on, he never got appointed.
All right, how are you? How are you?
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting in order, and Renee, if we can have a roll call.
Ms. Williford, Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Ms. Byrd?
Here.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Mr. Axton?
Here.
Mr. Jablonsky?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Moving to consent item, item number one, consideration of approval rejection amendment and/or postponement of the minutes of the March 10, 2022 Regular Planning Commission meeting, and item number two, consideration of approval acceptance rejection amendment and/or postponement of SFP-2122-6, a short form plat submitted by J.F. Holdings Smith Roberts Baldischweiler LLC for Starbucks for approximately 0.9182 acres of property located at 1200 West Lindsay Street. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket?
No.
I would like to remove item two from the consent docket. Okay, so I guess we can, do I read it now again?
Well, first you have to vote on the remaining.
Can we, I'll take a motion for the remaining consent item number one to be motion to approve?
Move to approve item one.
We have to vote on what you just asked for.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve item one for the minutes to be approved, and then move item two to the non-consent docket. Does that sound right? Or you want to make a separate motion?
Well, I'll make a motion.
For what?
For what?
Approve one?
Approve one.
Take two off of consent?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Do we have to vote that? And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carries to zero.
Okay. So do I need to read two again now for consideration? Okay, I'm going to read number two again. Consideration of approval acceptance rejection amendment and/or postponement of SFP-2122-6, a short form plat submitted by J.F. Holdings Smith Roberts Baldischweiler LLC for Starbucks for approximately 0.9182 acres of property located at 1200 West Lindsay Street. Is there a staff presentation?
This is short form plat located at the southwest corner of Lindsay and Berry Road. All the public improvements are currently existing, and so staff has recommended approval. I'm sure you're going to want to talk to the traffic engineer, and she's available.
Thank you.
Was that what that's about, was just to get the traffic information?
Yeah, I have some questions about that specifically. Yeah, so any questions for staff? Let everybody else, if there anybody else had any questions, go first. Okay, yeah, so I have some questions specifically regarding the traffic on here. Maybe if you want to just give me a summary of your report, and maybe some of the revisions on that intersection, and specifically, I have some pretty big concerns about the traffic of this intersection, so.
Sure, Jamie Short, City Traffic Engineer. The original site plan for this had, the driveway on Lindsay had full access, had a ride-in, ride-out, and left-in, left-out, and the driveway on Berry Street had a ride-out only. Staff raised concerns about this for safety issues, and the applicant came back with the new site plan that I believe you should have a copy. It now changes the driveway access on Lindsay to a ride-in, ride-out only, and gives full access on Berry Road. The concern was with the full access on Lindsay Street, people that were coming from the west, excuse me, from the east, from the north, or the south, would have to make a left turn into the driveway from Lindsay Street, crossing three lanes of traffic and a bike lane. Another option, which is hard to see on the site plan, but if you go further to the west, there is a median opening that has a U-turn available, so that people, if they couldn't make that left, they could go to the next median and make a U-turn, and then make a right-in. But we don't think that it would prohibit people from making that left, so we requested them to change that to a ride-in, ride-out. For Berry, Berry does not back up as much as Lindsay does, and people would be making left into there if they were going northbound. They would be able to use that left turn lane to make that left much more safely. If people were coming from the east and were going westbound, they could make a left at the light, and then make a right into the Starbucks that way, which they would have a protected left at that signalized intersection. That is the main differences. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
So one of the main changes is that we moved on Berry from a right-out-only exit, and it was an egress-only, to we've added ingress now pretty close to that intersection. So I know obviously that was reviewed, but can you maybe address having that turn there? Because I do feel like that could back up traffic across that intersection and possibly impede, depending on how, you know, traffic lights go, Lindsay traffic, too.
So you're saying that people that are trying to go southbound to turn right are going to back up into the intersection?
Yeah, if there is some delays in there, and I'm specifically thinking of a Starbucks on Main Street in particular, and I pulled the assessors map view, because I was trying to find some sort of site plan for that one as comparison, and regularly there are cars that stick out onto Main Street, and I, just from the county assessors page, there are 13 cars from their map view that they have on there, and that is beyond, like, that's curving across the front, everything, and this looks like we've got the same number of 13 cars. I'm just not confident that this site plan will actually keep 13 cars where they have it located and not go out to the road.
It's not just 13 cars, they have the whole length of that in front of the store on the north side of the building to also queue up, so that will fit another several cars.
In my mind, this is totally different from Main Street.
So I don't also understand what this pavilion is also, maybe to the, that's the dumpster? Because that doesn't look like it has a clean turn-in to go to the drive either. There's like, it's not like a straight drive to get to the drive-in from Berry.
They can make a left onto Berry and go south, and then turn right, go to the dumpster, pick it up, empty it, then take a right, and take a right on Lindsay.
So now they have a direct, they won't have to move further up to closer to Lindsay in order to make it into that drive? Because I know we didn't have like a great image of the revised one, we had a really good one on the initial one, and that was not a clean turn there.
Yeah, on the original, it was not clean, but this kind of streamlines it that even better.
And the?
I was going to say, I didn't see the one last month, I guess I missed it because I wasn't here, but that, well, the first thing I saw was the way this drive-through works, it actually looks like it works, especially with that dumpster pad in there and the additional lanes that you get there, I thought this was a pretty good layout for traffic.
And so that pedestrian walkway was just for dumpsters then, too? That kind of answers that question?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, this was definitely better for that, I mean, you can, it was in the packet, the one in the packet was little concerning, too, and I know we had a revised one on there.
Staff also is going to work with the applicant about the raised median they're showing for the driveway in Lindsay that's not narrow enough to stop people from trying to turn a left, so during the permit process, we are going to work with them to make sure that that's corrected and according to our standards.
So there, remind me, there is not a median in front there currently, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not like to that portion of Lindsay?
Oh, you're talking about a median on Lindsay?
Are you saying like a median cut? Is that what you're saying, the median is?
I was talking about the median on the property itself.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
But yes, you're right, there is not a median right there on Lindsay either.
Yeah. Yeah, I do think that we're still going to see some impact of traffic, I mean, like, I printed it off if anybody would like to see, it's just if you pull the Cleveland County Assessors page for the Main Street, it shows, you know, the numbers of cars. I do think that this is a pretty comparable situation that can be an issue for traffic over here, and I think we've had so many citizens that previously have addressed concerns with traffic because of other intersections, I thought it was a little negligent not to talk about it. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the Penny Hill across the street, we specifically, I believe, this was before my time, had asked them to move their drive further back on Berry to help with traffic as well, and I'm wondering why that wasn't made as a choice here as well? So like to the, I guess that would be south.
I believe it's because the site itself is not long enough to go that far south, and then the further you go south, the less queuing is available.
I'm not a site planner, so I might defer to somebody who kind of does some space planning down on the other end to maybe add any thoughts to that, but.
Also, there at Berry on the south leg of the intersection, it does taper down, it's wider at the intersection, and then tapers down, so there's actually enough for two lanes there near Lindsay, and then it, excuse me, and then it narrows down to one.
Oh, I see, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, honestly, when they, we got the one in the packet, I did not like that one, and what we have on the color paper is what I imagined it should be, so I really like this one.
And this is the driveway configuration that I recommended to the applicant?
It's definitely improved. I still have some concerns with it, but it is definitely improved.
And I just feel since we're getting three Dunkin' Donuts in town, things is going to spread out, we're not going to be as many people coming to Starbucks.
All right, any other questions for staff? No, I dominated that one, sorry, guys. Okay, does, is there any?
Well, I appreciate your thoughtfulness.
That one's in my ward, I checked, it was like, the other one that we've looked at was across the street, but that one is in my ward. But seeing that, I doubt we have any kind of applicant presentation on here, but any audience comments? Any other Planning Commission discussion? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried five to one.
Moving to our next item, I'm going to read the next three items in unison. Item three, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution number R-2122-105, Fred Thomas III, fourth, and Hampton Homes LLC request amendment of Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from institutional designation to medium-density residential designation for property generally located north of 1700 North Porter Avenue. Item number four, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2122-41, Fred Thomas IV and Hampton Homes LLC request rezoning from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to SPUD Simple Planned Unit Development for 4.05 acres of property generally located north of 1700 North Porter Avenue. Consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2122-11, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Fred Thomas IV Hampton Homes LLC and Norman Lodge 38 AF and AM Landis Engineering for Avadon Terrace Edition, a simple planned unit development for 7.48 acres of property generally located north of 1700 North Porter Avenue, and I will take the staff presentation.
Hello, I am Logan Hubble with the Planning Department. We have an application from Fred Thomas IV and Hampton Homes LLC for, as advertised, a Norman 2025 Land Use Plan Amendment from institutional to medium-density residential designation and a rezoning to SPUD Simple Planned Unit Development. However, upon review, staff believes that this property would be better designated as low-density residential on the 2025 Land Use Plan. The property is located at the northwest corner of North Porter Avenue and San Piper Lane, is currently zoned R1 Single Family Dwelling District with permissive use for a Masonic Lodge and is 4.05 acres in area. The, to the north is zoned RM2 Low Density Apartment District. The east, south, and west surrounding tracks are all zoned R1 Single Family Dwelling District. To the, the north is currently two-family residential, the east and west are single-family residential, and to the south is a Masonic Lodge. This is the, the aerial of the site. This is looking from the, the intersection of Porter and San Piper Lane at the property. This is looking at the, the properties across from, from this property on Porter. This is looking north on Porter, and this is looking south on Porter. The applicant wished to construct a single-family residential development, as you can see here on the preliminary plat. Staff forwards this request for a Norman 2025 Land Use Plan Amendment from institutional to low-density residential rather than medium-density residential as resolution number R-2122-15. Staff also forwards this request for rezoning from R1 Single Family Dwelling District with permissive use for a Masonic Lodge to SPUD Simple Planned Unit Development as ordinance number O-2122-41, as well as preliminary plat PP-2122-11 for consideration by the Planning Commission and a recommendation to City Council.
Does anybody have any questions for the staff? Any commission questions for staff?
I do, I have a couple of questions. What's the threshold for low versus medium density? Because these look like they're packed in pretty tight.
I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yeah, what's the threshold between low and medium-density residential?
Well, in the 2025 plan that was done in 2004, I've gone through it several times, it doesn't exactly say, it has for the high-density at 18, it has.
Units per acre.
Mm-hmm, correct. But it is, and it talks about the duplexes and multifamily units with approximately 12 units per acre, but that's about as in-depth as it got.
So what is this in terms of, you calculated how many units per acre we got here?
I believe it's six units per acre.
Approximately six.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff?
I have one more question. I thought I read that there were two green spaces, but when I'm looking at this diagram, I only see, it's hard to tell, I think.
Yeah, well, so there's, there's one, well, there's a, so in the, the northwest corner there, there's a common area that's a detention pond, and then in the kind of crook of the, of the elbow there, there's a, and you can see some parking, that's a, it's, it's just kind of, yeah, it's, it's a common area, there's nothing, nothing there at the moment, but.
So, so how, how close is the nearest park from the furthest house on the cul-de-sac?
I'm not sure.
I can tell. If you, if you cross Porter, which this is a signalized intersection, it will be, and go into, thank you, Seton Place, there is a park, maybe a quarter mile down on the north side of that subdivision, Main Street there.
So is that green space that's in that northwest corner there for drainage?
Yeah, it's, it's a detention pond.
It's a detention pond, yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I take the applicant presentation, if there is one.
Hello, I'm Steve Landies with Landies Engineering, representing Mr. Thomas here on this one. I've always learned the best thing to do is kind of be quiet when I can, so hopefully I'll keep this short. Just to kind of clarify some of your questions, that corner, when we originally put this together, the full intent was to kind of create a park out of those areas over there that's a detention. The slope of this land is such that the detention pond will only be about two feet deep at the most, and therefore it's more of a flat park setting in the first place. Kind of intended to put soccer goals over there, kind of create a community area. Right now on the drainage, there's already in the corner, a pipe at the, in a box that actually drains underground through to the storm sewer, and the next, off Crawford to the next site, so it's really already developed for that approach. Of course, we developed a system where it actually holds, sustains the water, not to exceed any additional water to that storm sewer system, you know, through that detention process. We also, while we were doing a little bit tighter density, really all these homes are R1, except under your conventional R1 zoning, it's about 6,000 square feet lots, we're closer to 45. Technically, it's the same width, and everything works, with the exception of the backyards are a little narrower. So our thoughts were to create a community environment, was to actually have that park area as well, even though it's more of a private approach, and to possibly have a small pool system, gazebo over across the way to create a kind of a community environment. It's kind of from the old days where there used to be a neighborhood pool and something to create community there, and I think we were trying to follow that same approach.
Across the street where the parking is shown?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that area is just going to be a gazebo, possibly a time if they want to build a clubhouse or something there for kids, and a small pool and park area in those areas. Basically, things that if across the street as well doesn't flood, those will be kind of community areas as well. Only other thing we did was originally, when we had the property, it didn't line up with San Piper Lane, so I think he went back to the Masonic Lodge, asked for some additional properties so we could align those two streets up, which is why we're replating both of them at the same time. Other than that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Well, I don't know if you thought about, you know, the market that you're making to, but I know that millennials and seniors have the same desires for housing, and that's less land, so they don't want as big a yard, so I would look at this as being housing that's designed for millennials or seniors.
Yes. I think he's, Mr. Thomas has done his market research on that part of it, and it's a little bit different, it's not quite that zero lot line high-density, but it's kind of a capy bix between the two, and it's something to try to create a community, that was kind of what those two areas were designed around.
I like that, that green space can do some double duty, but now, now that you said it, I'm slightly concerned about the, the stormwater runoff. You know, there's less impervious, I mean, there's, there's more impervious surface, and if that, if that detention pond, retention pond doesn't actually hold much water, if it's going to drain off quickly, is this going to cause a problem with stormwater?
No, no, actually we have less, originally those were two lot, there was a lot and a detention area, and we went ahead and sacrificed another lot to keep it shallower and spread it out, so it'll actually have more of a holding at a lower vault. Same volume, smaller depth, and more area for that, that volume. So right now, actually, all that water off that field drains that corner, kind of works through that corner into one inlet, now we'll have a levee off the back that's about three or four feet, so you'll never get water to the backside, and it'll hold it just in that area, not ever reach the street. Of course, you're talking about the 100-year storm, so therefore that really won't happen very often, so 90% of the time, water will just kind of go through the trickle channels right at that inlet.
Storms are happening a lot more often.
You are correct on that one right there, but, but they're only a peak normally when you deal with that, so I think we should hopefully, it should, should make, like you said, a common area as much as, if you do a detention pond, they need to be a dual purpose and not really look like you just put a hole in the ground, and I think it's something to be useful, by keeping it shallow and spread out.
Can I ask another question?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any examples of this working in practice? I'm just wondering, if there were a big storm and it filled up, you know, with a foot of water, how long would it take for that to drain off before the soccer goals are usable again?
Oh, 15 minutes. So all you're doing is holding back that peak for that time period.
Great, thank you.
So as you don't over-impact that storm sewer downstream.
Thank you.
Can't be any worse than Lindsay Street.
All right, any other questions for the applicant?
Sure, explain the reasoning for the R3, R, is it right, or medium-density versus, sorry, medium-density versus low-density?
Well, doggone it, I think because we knew we had to find out and change that plan, I think somebody said, hey, this is the right direction to make it R2, and then I think city staff came back after we filled out that application possibly and said, hey, this will fit just as well as R1 or that lowest density. If it wants to go R1, I don't think it really has any impact on the way we're doing the development based off the numbers, so there's no objection to that regarding that, you know, that long-term plan.
SPUDs, they have specific guidelines, when you say medium-density, I think Jamie was talking about that earlier, these are still single-family residences, we're not allowing duplexes. It's just the lots are.
Yeah, and the one thing I like to keep is that the widths are just like any single-family residence, it's just the backyards will be, say, 40 feet deep instead of 60, so.
So the applicant's okay with it being low-density versus medium?
Yes, I don't, yeah, I think we're fine with that.
Awesome.
Yeah, great question. Anything else for the applicant? Seeing none, I will move to audience comments, if anybody from the audience would like to make a comment, there are cards on the back over by the sign on the wall, you will fill those out. Not seeing any, but. Okay, and then moving to Planning Commission discussion. I think it's nice to see something going in, in that area, some use of that space, we were talking about that before, so, and something that's comparable to the neighborhood that it's around. I would take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve based upon the low-density.
Change in the SPUD to modify that language to low-density. Okay?
I wouldn't do that, because I don't feel that's necessary, so I'm not going to vote yes for that.
Remind me if we don't, if, would we make any other motion? This might be a Beth question, like, what's procedurally how we go from here so we don't make a mistake?
Hello, Beth McCullough, City Attorney's Office. Let me turn first to the agenda, so I'm starting from the right place. So when it comes to the recommended change from medium-density to low-density, that is with respect to one of the applications, so what you might do first is take separate votes on items three, four, and five.
Great.
And then, yeah, yeah, that should be all, right, Jay?
Okay. And our density is item three, it looks like, so, okay, I will be, do I need to read the item? Do I need to read it separately? Okay, we're going to read it again, so we, I am looking for a motion for item number three, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution number R-2122-105, Fred Thomas IV and Hampton Homes LLC request amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from institutional designation to medium-density residential designation for property generally located north of 1700 North Porter Avenue, and I will let anybody who would like to make a specific motion on that make a motion for that item.
Well, I make a motion on what's written right there.
To approve?
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried five to one.
Moving to a vote for item number four, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2122-41, Fred Thomas IV and Hampton Homes LLC request rezoning from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to SPUD Simple Plan for 4.05 acres of property generally located north of 1700 North Porter Avenue, and I would take a motion for approval or what have you.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
And a vote?
You may vote.
And I, in case anybody wanted to make something different than an approval motion.
Everyone has voted, and the motion carried six to zero.
I think it's a good reminder that we can make other motions besides approval, too. Okay, moving to item number five, vote, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2122-11 consideration submitted by Fred Thomas the Fourth Hampton Homes LLC and Norman Lodge 38 AF and AM Landis Engineering for, say it again for me, I'm sorry. Avedon? Avedon Terrace Edition, a simple planned unit development for 7.48 acres of property generally located north of 1700 North Porter Avenue, and I would take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And a vote for a motion to approve.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried six to zero.
Moving to miscellaneous discussion, does staff have information for the commission? I believe you do.
I do. I'd like to make an announcement and ask everyone if they would please. As many of you know, we're in the middle of an administrative delay for the Center City Form-Based Code area, and that expires on June 14th, so to make all of our required notices, meeting deadlines, to keep this on the council agenda, we will need to have a special meeting, a special planning commission meeting on May 19th. That is one week after your regularly scheduled meeting. I'm sorry that it is doubling up like that, but I would really appreciate it if you guys could make every effort to be here so that we can have a quorum for that meeting.
And the time is 6:30 for that as well?
It will be.
Okay, thank you. Here.
I'll be in Dubai.
Yes, here in the council chambers, yes.
We expect photos. Any other staff information for commission? Do commissioners have any comments they'd like to make besides being in Dubai? I did have some interesting facts I was going to share. Just, I pulled some data that we get delivered to us from being part of the Norm Board of Realtors from the MLS, and just some interesting information about median sales prices. I know we've talked about homes for sale before. The median sales price as of March of 2022 was 250,000. It was 219,652 at the, in March of 2021, so it's gone up about $30,000. And from the year before that of March of 2020, that was a difference of 63,000. So we've gone up 93,000 from what the median sales price was in 2020 of 186,500 to 250,000. Also, the current inventory of homes is about half a month's worth, whereas it used to be about, at the same time of year in 2020 was two months or more. So just remembering, we have houses that we need in Norman. That's my comment. So we have a need for houses in Norman. Any other comments from commissioners?
Yeah, I have a comment. Tonight's discussion, you know, reminded me that we don't, we don't seem to have any rubrics for deciding how many parks we should have and where, what distance, what percentage of a local amount of land should be dedicated to green space, so...
Isn't there a rubric? I thought there was one.
Maybe there's clarification we can get for that.
We don't have anybody here from Parks Board, but I do know that this item did go to Parks Board, and I believe that it was approved by the Parks Board as a fee in lieu of to fund additional parks within that area. So Parks Board reviews these to determine the distance from the closest park and determining if someone would need to put additional land on their property to reserve it for a park.
Yeah, thank you. It's just disappointing to see fee in lieu of so often when, you know, I've got a park pretty close to our houses, you know, and it's great, my kids can walk over, they don't have to cross a busy street.
Yeah, I live in my neighborhood, and I got Eastwood Park, and I've also got, I think it's, what is it? I call it Neighborhood Park, but it's Rotary Park.
Right.
I got two big parks in my neighborhood within three blocks.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It's a good comment. Do, is there a specific use of funds that are used when there's fee in lieu of park for that the city allocates that to? Maybe a question that we could find out next time.
Well, it's determined, I mean, the Board of Parks, Parks Commissioners, they make those determinations through the Parks Department.
Like stormwater, for example, when we do fee in lieu of detention, that goes to overall City of Norman stormwater improvements, not necessarily on-site, but stormwater. So I'm curious if that also goes to parks in Norman or if it gets just absorbed elsewhere in budget. So I think that would be maybe a question we could get follow-up on next meeting. Does that sound good?
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, good question. Any other comments or questions? All right. There's nothing else to come before the commission, then I'll announce as adjourned.
Do you guys get a lot of glare off your thing?
No.
Do I just have the unlucky spot?
Yeah.
One of you might...